Thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes of January 2nd, 2025? Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
John Bullock?
Yes.
Al Mitchell?
Yes.
Julie O'Gala?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Let's get an approval of the minutes of February 6th.
Motion O'Gala.
Second, Mitchell.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. And last, the minutes of March 6th.
Second, Mitchell.
Previous O'Gala.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And we are caught up with the minutes. Okay, new business. Number one, ordinance amending the Will County, Illinois zoning ordinance for zoning case ZC-24-01, Litmax Multi Service Inc., owner of record Vincent Tessitore of Castle Law, attorney requesting a special use permit for a truck terminal for PIN number 15-08-31-100-018-0000 in New Lennox Township, commonly known as 22645 Cherry Hill Road, Joliet, Illinois, County Board District 2. Thank you, Chuck. Can I get a motion? A second? Okay. Discussion? Thank you. That's okay. Questions? Discussion? Would you like to speak, please?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Vince Tessitore on behalf of the petitioner and the owner of the property, Litmax Multi Service Inc. I'm from Castle Law. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. When we were at the Plan Commission, we didn't have this address, so I just wanted to highlight it for you. But out of all the special use permit factors, they were all found in favor of the proposed use, except for the staff had an issue with the access. We did go back and address that issue. And that's actually why the case was continued the last time that we were up before you. We addressed it by limiting the existing full access point to limited access point, to write-in, write-out, with a pork chop to be added. And then we actually also have a stop sign for the write-out portion. That was the way to address it. That was preferred by the Will County Department of Transportation. And that's reflected in the memo that Margie has done for you recently. And I appreciate that she did that because I think it's a good summary of what has happened since the Plan Commission. But I just wanted to give you that update. So we are requesting approval. I think we've addressed the one issue in a way that everyone finds to be favorable. And then we do have our traffic engineer here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have a motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry.
I can surprise the request if you would like.
Sorry, guys.
That's okay. So regarding this applicant, as you mentioned, the applicant is Litmax Multi Service who operates on a different location in Rockdale. He's looking to locate to this location to do truck repair, parking, and logistics. He is looking to build a building on the property for maintenance and the office operations. The proposed hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. About 10 employees would be working from the site. About two to five customers on average would visit the site per day. And in all, it would generate about 10 to 15 vehicle trips per day. And if you're familiar with this area, it is on the northeast corner of US 52 and Cherry Hill Road. It's about a 10-acre parcel, but the proposed truck parking is actually going to be in the far back portion of the property. The access drive on the property is as furthest north as it possibly can be located away from the intersection. But as staff, you know, stated in the staff report, the concern is the intersection is right there, and it is not a true 90-degree intersection. It is on an angle, and there are traffic concerns regarding that. But with the traffic study, Will County DOT did review that. They would prefer the pork chop and the write-in, write-out controlled entrance to the site. With the property already being zoned I-2 and this area being industrial, some of the truck uses would be permitted by right. So by denying the special use, it would not stop the trucks from this area. But it would, in terms of the intensity of the truck operations, the trucking logistics, repair, and the parking occurring from the site, that's what triggers the truck terminal and the special use. About 109 trucks would be shown to be able to be parked on-site. And with that, regarding the special use criteria, as Mr. Tessitore mentioned, staff's largest concern is just the impact to the public roads in the area with the trucks. But again, just because it's a special use, they could do truck repair without the special use, and that would still be a concern with the traffic. There is one neighbor that came out with concerns at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting regarding drainage, the traffic, things of that nature. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend denial with a unanimous vote. But should this committee recommend approval, staff had four conditions in the staff report that would help mitigate any adverse concerns or impacts to the site. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Margie, could you just please list those four conditions, please?
Oh, certainly. The first condition, it should be on the second page of the staff report. But it basically says, upon 14 days of written notice, the owner of record and/or operator at their last known address, Will County Lanies Department and Will County Sheriff's Department employees are hereby granted the right of entry in and upon the premise for the purpose of inspecting the premises and uses thereon for compliance with terms and conditions of this special use permit. This is a standard condition we usually put on special uses. Number two, the special use shall be transferable to subsequent property owners. Three, the owner-operator shall work with the Will County Division of Transportation and Illinois Department of Transportation to ensure that the access to the site minimizes the dangers to the public right-of-way. Number four, the owner must comply with all resource recovery and energy requirements. And there is about seven conditions with that. So all tires from trucks must be stored within a building on-site. Tires must be properly disposed of through an I-EPA permitted facility. Receipts for disposal must be kept on-site to verify proper disposal. At no time shall there be any tires stored on the property for disposal. If 50 or more tires are stored on the site at any one time, the facility must register as a tire storage facility with the Illinois EPA. No burning or open dumping of any type of wastes would be allowed on the site. All repair and maintenance shall occur within the building on-site. All automotive fluids shall be stored in appropriate bulk containers on concrete or asphalt surface. Secondary containment shall be provided for all liquid storage containers. If the applicant installs a fuel tank on the property, the fuel tank must be approved by the state fire marshure. All spills must be immediately responded to and removed from the site's surface. At least one spill response kit must be maintained on-site.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know this area. And magically, it's my county board district. Who would think that? But yeah, that is tricky. So as long as DOT feels that the write-in and write-out helps because it's, you know, that crazy angle everywhere there.
They're still going to require an amendment to the existing access. So they would need an amended access permit from DOT to be issued. So all the permitting requirements would still be required as part of this development.
We don't have to do anything. That's going to be part of...
Not part. Yeah, that would be part of finishing up their site development.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I have a question, probably for you. If... So let's say we denied the special... Well, let's say we approved the special use permit. What would the increase in truck traffic be from the current permitted use of truck repair versus the full approval of the special use permit?
There wouldn't be any. Our clients, and we have a traffic study that, you know, uses the lingo that there wouldn't be a negative impact on traffic based on the configuration that we're proposing. But in more practical terms, our client is essentially a truck maintenance operation. They aren't... They do want to park trucks there. That's the need for... That represents the need for the special use permit. But primarily, they're a truck maintenance operation. And they're serving, you know, primarily, if not exclusively, their own trucks.
Okay.
I should mention, too, that we did talk with Steve Arden, who is the nearby neighbor, I think, that Margie had mentioned prior to the meeting today. And he talked to our engineer and myself and wanted me to represent that we sufficiently answered his questions. I think he had signed up to speak, but wanted me to let you guys know that he doesn't need to do that because we answered his questions.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Herb?
I know, Madam Chair, we addressed the chair, but can I ask Margie the question?
Yeah.
You're so kind. Margie, I don't see numbers here where the Planning and Zoning Board denied. Can you tell me what those numbers are, and if possible, what specifically were the reasons for the denial?
Yeah, in terms of the statements of fact, it said the Planning and Zoning Commission voted zero to seven to approve, so that thereby denies the request. Based on the staff report's analysis with the concern for the traffic in the area, they felt that just the additional trucks in the area, the immediate location of this site to that intersection was not the best idea.
Okay. And Madam Chair, even though this is Julie O'Gala District, I live down the road from there in Highland Pilto Park. And I do know that whenever there's an accident on State 80, trucks and traffic get off of Route 30 and travel west through town. It makes it impossible for me to get to this meeting on time. So you are proposing 109 trucks would be sitting there, and that traffic... Help me out.
There's that many parking spaces proposed for the site. The vehicle trips per day are in the 10 to 15 range. So it's...
So even though it is 109 parking spaces, you're telling me they won't be all occupied?
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I just also have... Oh, I'm sorry. Don, go ahead.
Do we know what the speed limit is on the road during... along that turn-in?
I'm sorry.
Do we know what the posted speed limit is?
Yeah, I don't know. Does anybody know?
Yeah, I don't know. It is in the traffic report. But yeah, on Cherry Hill, I'm not sure. I know on the nearby Route 52, it's 55. But I'm not sure about Cherry Hill. There is a light just north of there, and there's a stop sign at the intersection that we're talking about here at Cherry Hill and 52.
There's a stop sign.
Right, yeah. There's a stop sign. And on the northern intersection out, I think it's called the Street is Lareway. There's a stoplight there.
North, okay. But for Manhattan, we don't have a idea.
On 52, it would be 55.
Right. 52, which is Manhattan Road, is speed limit 55.
And it's one-way in each direction?
It's a two-lane road, too.
Yeah.
Judy, did you have... No. Okay. This is probably a comment more than a question for staff. So essentially, since this is zoned I-2, pretty much no matter what business goes here, the same concerns regarding the intersection are going to apply most. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote on this? Okay. Do we want a previous roll or do we want a roll call on this? Okay. Roll call? Okay, let's do a roll call. Thank you, Don.
CC4081, special...
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
John Bullock? Al Mitchell?
Yes.
O'Gala?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Number two, ordinance amending the Will County zoning ordinance for zoning case ZC-24-120, Jacob O. Farms, requesting S-24-101 special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility applies to 35.07 acres. V-24-310 variance for the number of required mowings from five times to one time. And V-24-311 variance for maximum ground cover plant height from 13 inches to 36 inches in Green Garden Township, commonly known as vacant property on La Grange Road near NEC of La Grange Road and West Manhattan Moonee Road, Moonee, Illinois, County Board District Number 3. Margie, do you want to give us a little synopsis?
Certainly. So this zoning case, ZC-24-120, was postponed last month. But regarding the property, the plan is to develop a 3.4 megawatt commercial solar energy facility on the easternmost 35 acres. It is split between two parcels that abut each other. And overall, the entire site is about 250 acres. So it's like centrally located between the two parcels. But it will be utilized as a single development. It's considered a zoning lot going forward. So the applicant is looking to lease this property. Based on the terms of the lease, the property would be on the site with all extensions executed to be about 40 years. With regards to this, they are proposing access to Route 45 to the west. And Route 45 or US 45 is IDOT. So they would be working with IDOT for all the permits needed for this site. There is an adjacent parcel just north of them that is used currently, I think, for outdoor storage. There is a building there, but it is not a residence. And every other location of residences in this area are far away from the site. So the app... The area is mixed agricultural and industrial areas. The Moonee-Madhatan-US45 intersection is just south of here. And then Green Garden Township's comprehensive plan actually shows this corridor to be industrial uses. The applicant has actually worked with the township for a long period before coming before the county. And they actually have Green Garden support in this project. The applicant is looking to use native pollinators underneath the panels. And then, as well as along the outside of the property, they're proposing two separate types of seed mix. Underneath the panels, they are proposing to use agrivoltaic. So the possibility of having sheep coming in to graze under the panels and between the rows of the panels and within the fence line is an option that they are considering. And then on the exterior, it will be the taller native pollinator plants. The site plans show they are meeting all the requirements of the zoning ordinance in terms of setbacks. The inverters will be about 1,200 feet from the closest structure. A seven-foot-tall fence will be installed with NOx boxes for emergency access. The point of interconnection will be along US 45. And then it'll be about just shy of 10,000 solar panels on the site. There is some flood plain in this vicinity of the project, so engineering would take a look at the impacts to that. If there are any identified flood or farm wetlands during the permitting phase, we'd be looking to make sure that they're staying away from them or minimizing their impact to them based on the county's requirements. With that being said, DOT only commented if, for whatever reason, access needs to be provided from Moonee-Madhatan. They actually took over the eastern side of US 45. And they would need permits if they needed to access Moonee-Madhatan to the south. But aside from that, there were no objectors present at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended a vote of four to one with the four conditions that staff recommended in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Or is there anyone wanting to speak on this? Judy?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
What type of fencing are they going to be using?
I believe you can ask the applicant. They are here, and they have a brief presentation if you wish.
Well, let's do that first.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jordan Bellnett, Managing Director of Development for Turning Point Energy. With me today are Kyle Berry from Aguirre Woods and also Liam Sawyer, Chris Wilson from Kelly Horn. Margie, can you... Thank you. You can go to the next one. So at Turning Point, we want our projects to all have economic, environmental, and community value. So we do that by developing community solar energy projects. They allow customers of ComEd, members of the county, to sign up and save money on their electric bill. These projects also increase the tax revenue to the county and to the municipalities. We create environmental value. These are clean renewable energy projects. They otherwise replace more carbon-intensive forms of electricity generation. We provide pollinator plantings on all our projects. And for this one, we're proposing an agrivoltaic component where we have sheep grazing to make a market for that and to maintain the site. We also... An important part of our mission is to create community value. So for every project that we do, we want to make a contribution to local charities who are doing good work in the community. So that's an important thing. Community solar is, you know, benefits customers. So a lot of people have gone solar, and they put solar on their roofs. But this model allows people to participate in the renewable energy economy by just signing up. So it allows people in low-income housing, people who live in condominiums, people who... businesses, municipalities, they can all sign up and essentially go solar. And it's a economic transaction. The project backfeeds electricity to the grid, gets credit for that electricity, and the savings can be distributed onto the subscribers who sign up for the project. You can go to the next one. Thanks. So as Margie described, this... We're asking for a 35-acre special use area. The solar array would be in the white rectangle out there. We selected that location because of the 247-acre combined parcel, this pushes the solar array furthest away from any residences. It's over 1,500 feet from, as you can see, from Trail Road and 2,000 feet from Moonee-Madhatan and 1,500 feet from La Grange Road. We are proposing the entrance off La Grange Road as well. So I've been to Green Garden many times. I've noticed all the abutters several times. I held the community workshop in Green Garden at their town hall, where I fielded questions about the solar array. We presented to the Planning Commission, and we also presented to the Green Garden Township Board. So it is important that we engaged all those entities. The end result, as Margie said, is the Green Garden Board voted unanimously to approve the project as presently designed. Margie, can flip to the next one. A couple of things that came out of that process. So originally, we contemplated accessing the site from Moonee-Madhatan Road. But in speaking with the township and the abutters, they did not want to see the site accessed from the south. So we moved, shifted the access so it comes in off La Grange Road as presently designed. So that was good that we had that back and forth, and it allowed us, gave us the chance to redesign. And so it's a more straightforward kind of access from the west. The point of interconnection is out on La Grange Road as well. So the point of interconnection is alongside the current access road. It has a pollinator-friendly seed mix. It's a single-axis tracker system, so it rotates throughout the day to follow the sun. The project does have a countersigned interconnection agreement. You can go to the next one. So these projects provide a lot of benefits. So they're job creators. You need electricians. You need civil work. You need laborers to construct the facility. Gives the potential for subscribers to save on their electric bill. It increases the tax revenue 13-fold in the first year over the current ag use, reduces greenhouse emissions. These projects, as they're distributed throughout the areas, actually help with grid resiliency, where power is produced closer to where it's consumed. We create a pollinator habitat around the solar array. Overall, it's an improvement to the soil health with these plantings. And in this case, where it's a dual-use project where we're doing grazing as well as electrical production. So we've done a lot of studies that are put in our application. We've done a glare study. These projects, they don't... Beyond the construction, there's really not much traffic visiting the site. There is maintenance. There is moving sheep in and out. And there's periodic maintenance for electrical and vegetation as well. There's really no lighting. We've done a noise study. The project is sited very far away from all other structures. And, you know, we've had some interesting conversations with the community about how we can invest in Green Garden. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris, our landscape architect, who can talk a little bit about the conservation plan. And then I'll be happy to take questions after. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, Raquel. We have a question for you.
Just really quickly, you can stand there. You can come back.
You can stay up there.
I just want to know what was a... what a countersigned interconnection agreement was.
Sure. That's a contract with the electric utility and the project. So the utility is saying, yes, we're going to allow you to feed electricity for this 3.4 AC, megawatt AC project at this location.
Yeah, it was sandwiched in between two non-related ideas. So I was like, what? Okay, go. Sorry, I apologize.
Judy, did you want to ask your question, or do you want to wait?
What type of fencing are you guys using? I know you're off the beaten path. You're in the back.
Yeah. So most of these projects, we've been proposing like the farm-style fencing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ag fencing. And then I'm not sure who's going to answer all these questions that I have. Questions about how many poles, since you're so far back, how many electrical poles are you going to have to put in to reach that site?
Sure.
And what it says, some will be above ground, some's above ground, some below ground.
Yes. The proposed... The proposed plan has overhead connection. Liam, do you have the number of poles? I'll let Liam answer that.
Hello, Liam Sawyer, Civil Engineer, Kelly Horn, 451 Field, Warrenville. We're currently, as designed right now, there are, I believe, four... There's three poles near the La Grange Road, which is pretty typical for metering with the utility company and kind of what the project owner needs. But to get from our project site to there, I believe there is an additional four poles, and that's just a turn as we're following the road as that's routing. So there's about three poles directly next to the road and about three other on-site.
Okay. So this... So this is one thing and a lot of people do not have solar in their neck of the woods. I do. And the one thing that has always, you know, really started as these continue to pop up is the overhead, the poles that are overhead. And I know when we had a proposal from Manhattan, we passed, I think it was last month or the month before, they requested that the, everything, all the interconnection, everything be underground. Because one thing, as you see and you're driving, because solar just keeps popping up all over, you just see all these poles and they just look like a collection of clutter in my mind, right? So what would it take for you guys to do underground?
So I think what we could do, right now in the connection agreement with ComEd, they are specifying overhead equipment that they would own. So that's three poles nearest to the road. From that point, we can underground it. We would have to do a directional drill underneath, underneath the stream that's out there. But that can be done.
Okay. So do we know, I don't know, Marguerite, if we have any connection or contact with ComEd? Does ComEd require overhead connection for that? Do they not? I have no idea. I don't even know if you do.
I don't, but I have heard from other solar companies. They have worked with ComEd to do underground interconnection. In terms of this project, they showed based on their interconnection to be above ground and that's what ComEd agreed to for this project.
Okay. Can we have, I'd like to have staff look into ComEd and find that out because it is unsightly to be driving down the road and see this collection. It's not, it's agriculture land, it's ag community out there and to have a collection of poles all over is bothersome to me. That's where I live. I live in the country. We farm. I don't like that. So if we can find, we'd like to have that found out. I would, if we can go ahead and do we need to make any kind of condition, put it underground for the rest, Marguerite? Because at this point, we don't have the answer from ComEd, but.
Yeah, so right now, condition number three that the planning and zoning added to the special use onsite, power lines and utility connections will be allowed above ground if required by the electrical utility provider. So really, that just applies to the point of interconnection. If ComEd required three riser poles to match what they're putting in, to basically parallel their system, that's what would be allowed to be above ground. The other utility lines would have to go underground essentially.
But the poles going from that first area back can be underground?
Yeah, so we can underground after the ComEd, after we transition from the ComEd owned equipment. So those poles are owned by ComEd that are on the project site. If the board wants that, we can underground it from that point on to the solar array.
Okay. And that's something that I'd like us to consider because that way you'd only have it right up by the road, which is still unsightly. But you wouldn't see them randomly placed because there's long distance because they are going to the back, which I appreciate. But then it wouldn't be in the middle of a field. You would not see this because around this would be all ag lands to remain. So I would like to do that. I'm not quite sure how we do that to make sure that happens.
It's already in the code that they have to bury utility lines. The condition being added just allows them to be above ground to tie into ComEd's requirements.
Okay. Okay. I have another comment too. So that sounds good to me. I also like the fact that ag fencing, one thing I don't like, being a farmer, to say that you're going to improve the soil health by doing the solar. I don't know where that's coming from. I think it's just marketing gimmicks in my mind, why we call it a solar farm. If farmers are currently using conservation practices on their farm, that's the best way to improve the solar, the soil, for sure. And also, you guys say, you know, you're saving carbon dioxide and all that stuff. Well, we as farmers grow corn and beans and we create oxygen all the time. So yeah, it's different maybe from, I don't know, maybe if you're drilling for oil or something. I'm not quite sure. But that's just, that's just a thing that's out there and it's really not a true statement in the exact how we get solar, how solar is created and the continued use on and requirement otherwise to create solar. So kind of drives me bonkers. Do you guys, I like the fact that you guys do announce, now Turning Point has worked with other communities for contributions to the charitable organizations. I like that. Thank you. That's what I have for right now.
Herb?
And Judy's last piece was actually my big question. What was your name again? I don't.
Jordan, Jordan Bellnet.
Jordan?
Yes.
Okay. Jordan, the very first page you put up there was project value proposition and number three was your commitment to the community.
Yep.
The second to last page you had up there, how you want to commit? And that's what Judy ended on. And my concern is how. It almost looked like you're being kind to the neighborhood, but they have some buy-in there. Jordan, it's kind of like you invite me to lunch and I hope you do that.
I'd love to.
But when the bill comes, I got to split the bill. And that, to me, is no fun. How are you, how are you, how are you giving back and helping this community if the only prospect you have is their buy-in or discount? Best way I can.
Yep. So we do provide value if you sign up. You're going to save money on your electric bill.
If I sign up?
If you sign up, you're free not to sign up. You're free to sign up.
Right.
Okay. That provides value. It does increase the tax revenue over the existing ag land. Okay? And then we make a charitable donation. So we have donated to Provision Lab. We have donated to Peatone Future Farmers. We have numerous letters of intent to donate to other organizations.
Are they non-for-profit? Non-for-profit?
Yeah, they're non-for-profits. And we do that when we get through our permitting so that we know the project is going to move forward. And one of the, you know, one of the kind of rewarding things of the job is I do get to engage with the local communities and ask them. You know, I didn't know, what does Green Garden need? And so, well, it turns out that they need some maintenance on a historic cemetery that they have trouble to get funding with.
And as you know, solar farms are palatable in some communities and not the others. So being a good neighbor to non-for-profits, that's very important. If you're going to come into that neighborhood, be a good neighbor.
I agree.
Jordan, thank you so much and I'll take you up on that lunch offer.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I did. So I appreciate that you're going to be making a donation to the cemetery. Is that going to be a, this is another thing I've been thinking about. So solar companies come in, they make a one-time donation and then they're there for 30, 40 years. So you'll be making a donation to the cemetery. What does that, what does that look like and how long will that be?
Yeah. So we will make an initial donation. And then what we're also doing, some of our sites are leased, but this one's leased. Some of them, we actually purchased the land, the sites. And we have, we have three in Will County, actually, where we are purchasing the land. So those sites, we are going to make annual donations because we have, you know, control of the land. And so we're the component of, of the, basically, the project pays rent to the land company. And a portion of that, we will contribute annually to these same, you know, nonprofits that we've, that we've engaged with.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that because it is a long-term commitment of change, taking the property out of ag and putting in solar. So my final question, I forgot to mention, ask this earlier, was have you guys met with the Soil and Water Conservation District and discussed what type of plantings you would be putting in? Because as you know, even though farms abut each other, the land is, changes from spot to spot. Certain plantings are good for some areas and not other areas. And I think they have, I know the state has a pollinator mix, but that's, that's a one-size-fits-all. It's not how soil is. So have you met with them to have that? And will you go by the plantings that they suggest as the better, better plantings for the area?
Yeah. I'm going to let Chris take that one because. Good morning. I'm Chris Wilson, landscape architect with Kimley Horn. To kind of address your question there and also if you would look at the presentation, yes, we've had extensive conversation with the Soil and Water Conservation District, specifically with Robert Jankowski and a couple other members as well on the board there. As part of that conservation plan, we've had back and forth discussions on ways to prepare the site, address any sort of existing erosional or sediment problems, any potential erosion, sediment control and vegetation. And as part of the vegetation, we also strongly believe that no site is the same. So we had actually looked at the specific soils and hydrology of this lease area of the property. So not the whole property, but even just the specific area and prepared the two mixes custom to this project, which we had provided to the SWCD for their review and they recommend to move forward with that mix, both mixes.
Okay. Marguerite, I have one final, my final question here is there's, there's no requirement for landscaping around the external part of this at all, right? None?
Correct. In terms of shrubs and trees, it basically comes down to if there's residences within, I think, 300 feet, there's an option to provide some screening. But most of the ordinance nowadays, and especially applicable to this project, there's no residents within 300 feet. So in terms of screening, that's not required in this instance.
Good, good. Because I don't, I don't want, I think it's crazy in the middle of nowhere to have that. I think screening altogether should most definitely not be used. But, okay, thank you.
Okay. You're done?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Did you guys have anything else that you wanted to talk about while you're here? Okay. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on this issue? Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Let's just do a roll call.
ZC 24120, special use permit for commercial solar energy facility applies to 35.07 acres with four conditions. Sherry Newquest?
Yes.
Herbert Brooks?
Yeah.
Dawn Bullock? Raquel Mitchell?
Yes.
Judy Ogala?
Yes.
And Denise Winfrey.
Motion passes. Number three, moving on. Zoning case ZC-25-005, LMD Liquor LLC, requesting a special use permit for a bar tavern in Joliet Township, commonly known as 1619 East Cass Street, Joliet, Illinois, County Board District 6. Can I get a motion?
Motion, Ogala.
Second, Mitchell.
So if I may jump in here.
Please.
It actually has been requested to be withdrawn, so it just needs to be removed from the agenda.
Oh, right. I didn't.
So it was withdrawn.
Sorry about that. Do we need a motion or is it just withdrawn?
I think in the past, we've just removed it from the agenda.
Okay.
Make a motion to remove it.
Second, can I second?
Second, Mitchell.
All right. Do we need an, all in favor? Or do we need a roll call?
We don't need a.
Yeah, we don't need the motion, so we're good. Moving on. Number four, zoning case ZC-24-102. Helen, a Stumbris Land Trust owner of record, requesting a special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility, variance for ground cover, plant height from 13 inches to 36 inches and a variance for the number of required mowings from five times to two times in Will Township, commonly known as 5949 West Eagle Lake Road, Peatone, Illinois, County Board District 2. Do we have a motion in a second? All right. Staff, you want to fill this in?
Yeah, so the applicant's proposing a two-megawatt commercial solar energy facility applying to 19.28 acres of the 80.65 acre parcel. Properties within Will Township. There are no municipalities within the mile and a half radius. For the site plan, the facility is proposed to have 3,888 solar panels on site. After the staff report was published, staff received an email from the Will Township supervisor stating that the Will Township and the Will Township Road District are objecting to the special use. This was sent out as a memo. At the planning and zoning meeting on March 18th, no objectors were present. The planning and zoning board voted to approve the two associated variances for plant height and the number of required mowings with a vote of five to one. Additionally, the planning and zoning board voted to approve the special use permit with four conditions with a vote of five to one. I'm happy to answer any questions. The agent is here and they have a presentation ready if interested.
Thank you. Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Good morning. John Prock from Synergy Power. I'm the developer for the project of a two-megawatt project in, here in Will County and near Peatone through our development partner, ESP Solar LLC. If, next slide, number two. This is a community solar project, which everyone seems to be familiar with. The project benefits to the local community. It has a 30% guarantee in centrifugal rings that we propose giving to the local residents. And we offer every month to subscribe as we move out from the project area. So the benefit can go to local residents and business owners. And it will eventually go to all subscribers in the area if not enough people participate. We have been developing 450 projects over the last 16 years and we have 10-plus Illinois municipalities that have benefited from our projects. Next slide, please. This is on Eagle Lake Road. The project is a two-megawatt AC community solar project. There's very minimal traffic as it is now and will also have very little traffic during construction and even less during operations. There's minimal visibility to the project. There's a vegetative screen that's naturally there on the east and west side. And then across the road, next to the residence, there's only two or three residents that could even see this project. They, around their houses and along their fence row, have natural vegetative screen. We will put an ag fence there, but no additional trees or plantings or any fancy plastic woven things within the fence. Next slide, please. We do meet all the Will County and the state requirements from what we've seen on this project. And we've done glare studies. We've made sure we're within the setbacks. And the only thing that we're asking for is a height variance for our plants that can be, we've, we've worked with Cook, Will and Cook County Soil and Water to get their recommended seed mix for the project. Next slide, please. As you can see, there's only three neighbors that could see the project from their residences and they would really have to go to the road and look for the project. It's not something that they'll see from their front porch because of that natural trees that they have around their properties. Next slide, please. This is looking east and west. There's very minimal traffic right now. And it, from what we have noticed and talking to the road commissioner, Bruce, that the, most of the traffic from the west tends to do their daily activities driving west and those to the east tend to go east. So this is kind of a stuck in the middle. The IDOT has quite a bit of property north of the project and they don't have, currently use those offices for anything that we can, we've never seen traffic go in and out of there. Next slide, please. This is kind of the layout of the project. Our local farmer, who has been farming this 160 acres with, between two plots, has been here since the 1950s. here since the 1950s. He is, this is a nice revenue stream for him, because this year, farming is not, he doesn't expect to make much money this year, so.
Sorry, can you just hang for a second?
Sure. It's okay.
My iPad is just stuck on ridiculous, but go ahead.
It might be more interesting than community solar, okay. So, we're going to use pollinator-friendly, and we'll, actually, our farmer partner has said that he might have to sell his farm if he, if he didn't have this extra revenue on the 15 acres that will provide him income. Next slide, please. We've done quite a few projects in the area, even with neighbors. We always want to work with the community. This is a project that we did in Machesney Park, and one in Carbon Hill, that we were very careful to take neighbors into consideration. This project doesn't have very many neighbors, so we won't have to go through all those. Some of our other projects that we have in the area are two projects in Pontiac, and one in Borbonay, that one of the projects is actually on the airport in Pontiac. Next slide. We've done all the notifications that were required. Will County has been very organized and very helpful in going through this process. Thank you. The next slide, please. The property tax and the local benefits, you've heard from other community solar developers, but we tend to go one step further, and we have set aside $100,000 for local projects. We've been in conversations with Peatone to do a special project for their windmill, and also the Will County Economic Development. We've been in talks with them to see what the needs of the local community are, apart from just getting solar benefit and tax revenue. So, last slide, please. The existing conditions are suitable for the solar project. The current farm has a LESA score of 211 out of 300. It is good farmland, but it's not prime. The project is in full compliance with the state and county regulations of the siting law, and the staff report recommended approval for the project. Traffic impacts are minimal, and Synergy has attempted to address all the local stakeholder concerns. We've gone and met with the neighbors, we've sat down with them, had coffee and donuts, et cetera, for those that were willing to participate and talk with us. The po, the project generates $100,000 to be set aside for probably Peatone or Will County Economic Development. The property taxes are about $4,000 per year to the county and the school district and that flow down, and 30% energy savings for village residents, those within five miles that can sign up early on, that we'll try to do an outreach to. So, thank you, that's all I have right now.
Herb, you had a question?
I do. John, since you sent through Jordan's answer, you can plagiarize if you want, but I'm...
I've sent through the last year and a half of all the...
I'm always concerned about the community and your givebacks, and again, I commend you what you're doing. However, did I misinterpret this correctly? $100,000 of tax breaks for 20 years, is that your giveback to the community out there?
No, we're, we're setting $100,000 one-time payment?
One time.
For a project within Peatone or the Will County Economic Development. We've been in contact with Nick, who's the administrator in Peatone?
Right.
Sat down with him. We've looked at their old windmill, the mill that they have, that is starting to, it's kind of the emblematic symbol of Peatone, and it needs some definite repairs.
I like the coffee and donuts you threw in, too.
Okay, anytime, anytime.
I have a question, then, Judy. So, I know you, you mentioned that you met with the neighbors. I haven't seen any comments from them. Was there a lot of pushback on this, or were they generally okay with it?
No, we had two calls from neighbors, because when I sent out the notifications, I also included my email and phone number, and one of the neighbors contacted me, and we sat down with him, and he's even interested in having a solar project, so.
Okay. Judy, then, Dawn?
Thank you. So, my question is, what type of fencing are you going to use?
We'll use an...
You say ag, right?
We'll use an ag fence, and we'll use the larger mesh, so it really can't be seen from very far away.
Larger, oh yeah, the cross...
The big, yeah.
Okay, and then, my question is, why are you between $100,000 donation to either Peatone for the windmill, by the way, I live right there, or Will County Center for Economic Development? Why, why, why are they even involved in this conversation for that?
Well, they're the only local, the economic development, we always go to the closest neighbors, and Peatone is the closest neighbor for, for these type of community projects.
So, you won't be giving the $100,000 to Will County Economic Development?
We're in talks with Peter as well, and we're, he was just trying to see what they could come up with, but we have not made any decisions yet.
So, when you say that, you're saying Peter March, the mayor, is that who you mean, or?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. So, the contribution or donation, rather, would, will go to the village of Peatone?
We haven't decided. We've got $100,000 set aside for either Peatone, and we've looked at the windmill project, or Economic Development in Will County, who has not come back with a suggestion for...
I mean, for me, Economic Development, Will County, they're not anywhere here, the donations should go locally where they will be impacted by any negative outcome from this project. What is your plan for the, for the com ed polls?
There's going to be three com ed polls that they are owning, and then we only have one poll that goes from our interconnection to theirs.
Okay. I'd love to have that one poll underground. I mean, as much as we can put underground, I prefer, again, it's ag land out there, as you know, since you've been there. It's a nice rolling landscape, beautiful, all, all countryside, except for the crazy airport property that they bought that they no longer are, are at.
Correct.
You know, they're not there anymore. So, is it possible that you can at least put yours underground for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, you've met with Soil and Water Conservation District and have done all that?
Yes, we have. We've had conversations with them on several things, including their preferred seed mix.
Okay. And obviously, no landscaping is needed here because of its location. So, then, my only question is, since the Will Township, and I live in Will Township, supervisor and road district, they're opposed to this special use, and you have to get a permit from the road commissioner to access the road. What's your plan for that?
We've talked with Bruce several times, and he had no objections when we were talking with him. The letter that we received, Ashlyn can speak to that, was just an email from Brian Kahn?
Okay.
Who said that he was opposed, and also the road commission. But, it was only one email, and it was not from the road commission, who we've had conversations with, and there were no objections. We even had a email that I shared with during this process with Will County that there, that Bruce sent to me, that he received all of my information. Thank you very much, and we'll look forward to working with you, something to that effect, when your project gets to the building permits.
Okay.
If I can say that I've tried various times to reach Mr. Kahn. I even went to Brian's place, the restaurant. I understand he's sold, but there is no email, there is no website, and the telephone just goes to voicemail.
Okay. Yeah, oh, so, I didn't know what your conversation with Bruce was. I know that there was conversation in Will Township, that their overall plan for, you know, planning for the future, obviously, does not include any type of anything in the area except residential or agriculture, which is what it is. So, that would be why they would be, you know, opposed, opposed to it, I would guess. But, if Bruce had that conversation, I used to work for Bruce years ago, so...
Yeah, I, I talked to him when he was on the tractor, even, so.
I'm sure, yes, I'm sure that, that did happen. And Eagle Lake Road is the road directly to my south, and, right, there's very little traffic at all on that road. And where you're at, you actually are the tar and chip part, not the stone part.
We're, yeah, just a, like, a mile away from...
Where it's just gravel, right?
Right.
Okay, so. No sheep coming?
No sheep this time.
I don't know what we're going to do with all these sheep, and feeding all these sheep. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Dawn, go ahead.
So, I'm not picking on you specifically. I, I have been wondering this for a while, and you're here. Like, I'm not opposed to the whole solar situation, but it is starting to eat up farmland, and you're, not you specifically, but solar companies' compensation does not, it overshadows what renting that lot out to another farmer to farm it would be. So, is there, is there a reason? Because I know nothing. Is there a reason why we can't take solar onto the top of all of the warehouse developments that are going up, that is even much more yardage than you're probably getting on the ground? And, and find a way to do that solar, so it's not in competition and not taking over the land that we have left?
Yeah. We used to do a lot of rooftop solar in California, and though normally, that entire generation is consumed by the local tenant of the, of the warehouse, and there is, and so, there is no additional community benefit. Plus, we have to be where the consumption is, so distributed throughout the, the state, we have these small pockets of solar that have to go in to, to feed directly to the consumers that are in that area. So, it, it, it reduces the need for additional transmission and distribution systems by having local generation close to the consumer.
But, do I benefit if I don't sign up?
If you do not sign up, you benefit indirectly in that there's enough generation provided onto the system, so the com ed, or Ameren, or whoever that utility does not have to increase their generation in some other area. I don't know if that really, it's very indirect, but additional generation on the grid reduces the need or, or the cost from other types of generation. And solar is, we can do it for about half of what a utility can on a per kilowatt hour basis.
So, you're not feeding into anybody else? You are your own?
We're feeding into the grid, and it's a transactional swap through contraction, contraction. It's like a big swimming pool. Everybody's got their straw into the swimming pool. So, this little piece of water here may not be mine, but the guy who added the water for me on the other side of the pool, it all just kind of goes into a pool.
Okay. All right, so I want to go on record as saying I would be in favor of solar fields and farms and whatever if there was a direct financial savings to the, the people that live within a certain diameter of that solar farm without having to sign up for a special something. If that's going to be there, then the benefit to the people in that area, it should be some kind of discount without another program.
We, we would agree on that, actually, and that's something that the regulators would have to do with the utilities, because right now, that is not part of the Illinois Shines program, but it's a great idea.
Any other? I actually have a question.
Sure.
More for, I think this is probably more for staff, but maybe not. So, Margie, if I'm understanding you correctly on this idea of the underground, you know, versus polls, it sounds like what you're saying is our ordinances say that anything that com ed requires to be above ground has to be above ground, but everything else should be underground automatically. Am I interpreting that correctly? Or is that something that we need to make a special condition for?
So, under, I was just looking up our solar ordinance. So, under section 155-9.245, letter I, it says onsite utilities, and it says onsite power lines, utility connections must be placed underground unless otherwise expressly approved as part of the special use permit. So, we've, in practice, we've been conditioning to allow com ed, if they require a parallel system to be above ground, to do that. That's kind of how we phrase our conditions. We've noticed at times, some solar facilities may have to cross pipelines, where they might not be able to go underground, where we would ultimately, you know, recommend a condition to be above ground in that instance. We've had some solar facilities on old landfills where they can't break a cap, or a brownfield where, again, they can't break the ground cap, where that might be a necessity, where they have to be above ground, but essentially, they need to be underground unless this board allows it to be above ground.
So, is that something that's monitored as part of the permitting process? Because how would we know? You know, how would we know otherwise?
Yeah, so generally, part of the site development review, we do take a look at riser poles, and if they have to cross across pipelines or anything like that, if it's buried or not.
Okay. Thank you. Judy, you have another question?
I do. So, the project that we approved for Manhattan, last month or the month before, I don't recall, they request that every, everything be underground. Was that also including the com ed connection? Do you remember?
I believe with those projects, they had discussions with com ed to have it underground as much as possible. Com ed, if they require above ground, they are exempt from zoning standards, being a public utility. So, if they had riser poles above grounds, we don't have any jurisdiction to tell them they have to go underground. But, I believe those two projects you're speaking of, they agreed to go underground to inter, to tie into com ed's equipment.
Okay, so, but we don't know for sure that what, I understand when we have restrictions as to going underground. That makes sense, you can't do it. But, we do not definitely know that com ed requires it to be above ground at all, do we?
Just from seeing interconnection agreements of what was agreed to for the point of interconnection, they usually will outline how many riser poles they'll include, or utility poles for their side that they need to step up to the system or step down to the project, and then it's usually a parallel request on behalf of the developer to tie into com ed is usually what we've seen in interconnection agreements.
Okay, so, I think we really need to have a good thorough conversation with com ed, because, like I said, I would like, I would like everything underground if we can do it underground, because it just, it's bad enough when you're driving and, and out in eastern Will County, everywhere you go now, there is a solar field somewhere.
There's poles even for everything else.
But, well, those are the regular poles, but then you add another grouping of poles, and it is just, it's, it's, it's a nightmare out there. So, if we could do that, I don't know who in staff could be, look into that, but if we can get a report back by the next meeting, that would be great, and that's the way I'd like to see it go. I don't know about everyone else, but I mean, it's going to be there. It's not like it's a short-term use, you have to put up a temporary pole. This is going to be a long-term use, 30, 40 years, and who knows what happens after that. The young people in the room will know the rest of us, we don't know where we're going to be. Herb will be here, he'll still be the new guy on the board. Right. So, if we could look into that, so, thank you.
If I could add one more thing, just from the peanut gallery here, those, there are three or four poles that you see that are kind of grouped together, that's part of com ed's interconnection for, for any generator. interconnection for, for any generator. And it's safety for, for disconnects, et cetera. And that's why they have those three or four poles there. We typically go completely underground and then we have one pole to connect to theirs because to transition, to do that interconnection is quite expensive. If we have to go from their pole, ask them to bring it down to ground and then we interconnect there, it's quite expensive for them and they don't like to do it. So that's why we go that last few feet to the ComEd pole.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone else have questions? Jim?
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. And I don't know, my, my contention is these aren't solar farms. These are solar power plants. Let's just be honest, everybody. It is a utility. It's a solar power plant. I agree with Judy. I mean, $100,000 in a project of this size is nothing. And that money should go to the locals, whether it's the local town, the township, the roads, the fire district, things like that. Because I, I, I don't know the windmill thing in Piutone, but I mean, $100,000 doesn't buy you much today. And if this is a 30 or 40 year project, I mean, I would like to see this as ongoing, some, some ongoing contributions. Because a one, one-time check of $100,000 doesn't do much, especially on a project this size with the amount of money that is involved in these things. So that's, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have anyone else wanting to speak on this? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
ZC 24102, special use permit for commercial solar energy facility applies to 19.28 acres with four conditions. Sherri Newquest?
Yes.
Herbert Brooks?
Yes.
Don Bullock?
Raquel Mitchell?
Yes.
Judy Ogala?
No.
And Denise Winfrey. Passes?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to other business. We have the Crownholm Minor Subdivision, Crownholm, and I apologize if I'm butchering that name, Family Trust, owner of record, Robert Crownholm, trustee, Lockport Township, vacant, single-family residential, District Number Five. Brian, can you fill us in on this?
Sure. This is, as you stated, the Crownholm Subdivision Minor Platte. The Will County Subdivision Ordinance classifies different types of development into categories of minor platte, major platte, you know, major subdivision, things of that nature. This is the, I believe, the first time for this current committee to see a subdivision of land. And this happens to be one of the developments that fits into minor platte category. The Land Use and Development Committee is also the platte committee as defined by the ordinance. So any type of subdivision that requires platte committee approval, it is approved at this committee. So it's just one hearing and it's complete. Now, with this particular development, the owner of the project came into our office seeking a building permit for a new home. It was discovered that the person, that the owner of this property had purchased a lot that was illegally subdivided by another, another entity. And in order to move forward with the building permit, the subdivision had to be collect, correctly platted. Now, the Illinois Platte Act and the Will County Subdivision Ordinance define some activities that are exempt from a subdivision requirement, and this is not one of them. So unfortunately, a prior owner created this issue and the current owner inherited the problem. The good news is, is that we were able to get through this process really quickly. This is probably the fastest one that we've ever handled. It was completed in, you know, just about one month's time. So that, that was excellent. And the owner of this project has received all the necessary signatures on the platte so that this committee could hear it and approve it today with our recommendation of approval. It is adjacent to the City of Lockport. They will have city sewer and water. And the City of Lockport is on board with the project. There's really not much else to add about it. So if you had any other questions, I'd be, I'd try and answer them for you.
Okay. Anybody questions? We do a motion. I think we need a motion and a second anyway.
Second, Mitchell.
Dawn, you have a que, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a comment. This is the second time I've heard about plattes. I had a crash course back in 2020, 2021. And it still baffles me that someone can buy a piece of property and then find out it was illegally divided. And they don't know until they come to us and do what they're supposed to and get a permit to do something. And they're told, no, but by the way, it's going to cost you a whole bunch of money to get this fixed. I just, I wish there were somewhere we could fix this problem. I've been told it was the wild, wild west back then, and it doesn't solve the problem for the current homeowner. So that's my big beef today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dawn?
Just clarifying. So this is just establishing the, the platte, that this is now his property. These are the boundaries to it, et cetera.
So that's correct. With this, with this type of platte, which is only a one-lot subdivision, it is correcting the division that was done illegally in violation of the Platte Act. So essentially, what will happen today, if, if this is approved by this committee, the owner of this project will go to the recorder's office and record the platte, and it will be an official subdivision.
I love that you use the word subdivision. However, much different picture in my mind. Subdivisions, we all live in them. And I went, subdivision?
Judy, thank you. So Brian, so I kind of have to totally agree with what Micah says here. We have the situation all the time where, so was this an illegal according to now, or was it done illegally way back then?
This division of land was only done about, I think it was about five years ago. And the previous owner came into our office and told us that they intended to do this. And we told them that it was illegal in violation of the Platte Act, and they did it anyway.
Oh. Okay. And what does it cost the new owner? What would it cost that?
Well, unfortunately, I don't, I can't tell you what the engineering costs are, but I'm sure it was probably a few thousand bucks. It wouldn't surprise me. But the application cost, because it is one acre or less, was $675.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, Brian, first off, I want to congratulate your staff for doing this in less than a month. Because this is somebody's family that was, you know, got caught up in the system. And they're trying to, you know, they're trying to do the right thing, and then they found out that they're in a pickle. And by staff being very conscious of trying to get this done quickly, you've probably saved this family a lot of time, energy, and money at the end of the day. And especially right now, as we're going into construction season, I'm hoping that this family can get their foundation in and get their house built so they can be in it by the end of this year, just knowing construction schedule. So I just want to take time to thank you and the staff for, you know, getting this done so fast. So thanks, Brian.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, still roll call. We've been on a roll with the roll calls.
Sherri Newquest?
Yes.
Herbert Brooks?
Yes.
Don Bullock?
Yes.
Raquel Mitchell?
Yes.
Judy Ogala?
Yes.
And Denise Winfrey. Passes?
Thank you. Number two.
Say, thank you very much, your comments and your comments. Because I'm Robert Crownholm, and I didn't go through this. And thanks to the staff over at Will County Land Use because they were invaluable. They gave me all kinds of information and all kinds of opportunity to get this thing done so fast. And if they give me my building permit, hey, we'll start digging tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number two, authorizing the first extension of the special use permit for zoning case ZC 22-050, Binkston Land Management LLC, The Wild Flower Farm LLC, requesting an extension for the pin number shown in Green Garden Township, commonly known as 11332 West Jolly Road, Moni, Illinois, County Board District Number Three.
Second, Ogala.
Previous, Mitchell.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have our solar status report. And I, do you need to say anything about that, Margie, or?
Um, I, in terms of status, nothing new. I believe Colin is working on updating the atlas. And if you have not received a hard copy, it should be added to the agenda packet next month.
Yeah, it's, I put it, put them on your spots. Yep, there you go.
Got it right there. Thank you very much. Colin, you have an update on the land resource management plan?
Yes. Got a couple items. One, that our RFQ went out and has, we have received back two proposals. And we got those late yesterday afternoon, so we haven't looked through them yet. So.
Progress.
Yeah, progress, yes. So we're, we're, both, both companies are, are excellent companies. So I have no problem with working with any, any of them. And then Nicholas Hernandez has an update.
Hello. Just a quick update on the Fairmont Neighborhood Plan. I've been working on writing the draft for the update. And also, we were contacted by some community, or some members of the community. We had done our outreach already, but we wanted to be thorough. So they wanted us to do some more outreach. So we're doing another outreach event. We're calling it a listening session, where essentially, we're going to have presenters, different community partners come give short presentations. That includes Will County, the City of Joliet, Habeck Defre Humanity, Lockport Township, Lockport Township Park District, and Fairmont School. And we're all going to give a brief presentation and then answer questions afterwards. And this is the Saturday, April 5th, from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. at Shiloh Baptist Church, if anyone is willing to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have our ongoing discussion of accessory dwelling units. Anything new along those lines? Thank you.
So, so to start off with, just a summary of what the accelerated accessory dwelling units regulations that we currently have is one ADU per lot. And principal unit or the ADU must be owner occupied for a minimum of six months. The floor area may not exceed 49% of the principal unit or 650 square feet, whichever is less. And then we have a whole bunch of building consistency standards. The one big one that we were working on is regarding this one, 49% or the, or a minimum or maximum of 650 square feet, whichever is less. That's one, one that's, that hangs us up a lot. So based on our conversations last month, you were looking for some sort of sliding scale. Well, we already have a sliding scale for lot area coverage for all the districts, along with a sliding scale for the maximum accessory structure area. And so an A1 is 10 acres. A2 is a minimum of two and a half acres. E1 is about five acres. E2 is about two and a half acres. R1 is about 1.4 acres. And R2 is around one acre. And, and then we get smaller and smaller after that. So the question is, some of you don't know what an acre is. What does an acre actually look like? I know that question's going to come up. So the answer is about a football field, if that makes sense to you. If that, if that gives you a good perspective as to what a, what an acre is. So it's actually a little over 90 yards on a football field is what it is. And so when we take one acre, which would be the R2, and we apply the, the numbers for maximum areas, the total area coverage for, for all structures is 20%. And that's the orange box. And within that orange box is the 1,800 square feet of accessory structure area. So hopefully that gives you a good relationship in what we're talking about. And so each one, based on the maximum lot coverage or the maximum accessory area, it all slides up and down depending on the lot. And with that in mind, that the, the new language that, that you have would be for the accessory structure, the, the ADU not to exceed 49%. And it cannot exceed, depending on if it's an attached or detached, cannot exceed those, those square areas. They can't, so it's 49% or you can't exceed those squares, depending on, on what kind of project we're looking at. Hopefully that makes sense. Any questions on that?
Go ahead, Raquel. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
I'm, I'm probably like a lot of you who see, who, who's looking at this and going, are you kidding me? Because if we go down any new development, you have a postage stamp sized property and most, most of it is house or structure.
Yes.
So to see this is astounding to me. It's.
All right. This is for one acre. Now, if you go back to the, to the square footage for, for the smaller properties, the, the maximum lot coverage increases, but the accessory structure maximum area decreases. So, so you're, you're still trying to maintain a, a primary residence within, within those smaller, smaller lots.
Okay.
Does that help? Apparently not. Okay.
So let me, let me see if I can clarify. So let's say, can you go back to that previous slide? Let's say there's a 1,200 square foot house. It's a small house. I could not have
This one?
Previous. No, the where you had the listings.
Oh, the chart, yeah.
Yeah, the chart. So let's say down at the bottom, I have a 1,200 square foot house.
Yes.
So I could not have an accessory dwelling unit that exceeded just under 600 feet, no matter how big my lot was, essentially.
Those numbers don't quite work out, but okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, because 49% of 1,200 is.
Well, the, the, the 1,200 is for accessories, accessory structures.
Oh.
So, so if it's, so if it's a detached.
Accessory structure, okay.
So accessories, so a detached accessory structure could not exceed 1,200 square feet.
So let's say I had a 2,000 square foot house.
Yes.
My accessory structure could not exceed just under 1,000, 49%, you know.
Forty, yes, right, right.
It couldn't exceed 500. Let's just round it to 500 or 1,000 square feet.
Right, yeah.
Even no matter what, because my house was 2,000 square feet.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Any other questions? Oh, Micah?
So an accessory dwelling, that's something in addition to the home on the lot, correct? So when you're showing the football field, you're not showing another home on that lot. And I love, I love the graphic, by the way. But, so when you look at that and you put another house beside it, then you're taking up a lot of the land.
Correct.
Am I correct in my assumption? Okay.
Yeah.
Judy, go ahead.
But it doesn't have to be in that orange square.
Right.
It could be anywhere else.
Yeah.
And what about the, if, so loud, sorry. What about, what about if they want to, the existing structure, which is the, you know, regular home now, if they want to put another one up, which would be larger and make that the main structure, and the new one the accessory? Let's just say, I mean, could they do that?
If, if it does not exceed the total coverage area.
As long as it doesn't exceed it, it doesn't matter, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know that we're, do we need to vote on this today, or is this? Or is this where we want to take a look at it?
But yeah, we're, we're, we're eliciting ideas from.
Yep, okay.
I'm, I'm giving you my ideas of, of the three top items that we need, need to address. And then when we're done with that, you can come back at me with any other ideas that you want to address regarding this issue or make, suggest changes to what I've presented.
All right. Well, let's all take a look at this. And then if you guys have questions, is it okay to contact you directly?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and then we'll have it on the agenda again next month.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I want to say something about Judy? And so I think what I'd like to have Chuck, since you're here, thank you for doing, being here. If we could get this, and we'll put a little email with it, send it to the full board and them comment back to you on it, because everyone needs to understand what we're trying to do here and would have a really vested interest into whether they want to allow this or not allow it or make a change. So they get this beforehand. We could do that. Thank you.
Two, two other issues that we need to address. And that is accessory dwelling units in industrial districts. They are currently a special use. There we go. But it's only a special use in the text. It is not identified in the use, use table. So part number two would be to actually include, include that language. So it, so there's consistency within, within the zoning ordinance.
So we basically just need to add that to the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then another question that's come up is what are we doing with two, new homes with two kitchens? Right now, we just kind of automatically say two kitchens means there's going to be an ADU. And it's not necessarily that that's the case. So adding new, so, because the, the definition of a dwelling unit says that it has its own permanently installed cooking and sanitary facilities. So if there's two kitchens, two toilets, that's an ADU. But it, but we're saying with, with this addition to the text, that a second kitchen within new construction should not automatically be considered part of, as part of an attached ADU unless the construction details indicate it is, such as firewall separation, points of ingress and egress. I'm not happy with these, this language, but it's, it's the thought right now that we're, that we're working with. So this is probably going to change a little bit, but this is the idea that we're trying to come across. And it was also kind of mentioned, the, so part B here is just a reinforcement of the definition of a dwelling unit that any detached ADU, it will have kitchens and bathroom facilities.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to comment where I, the neighborhood I grew up in and also the neighborhood where I currently live, a lot of the houses are older. A lot of them have kitchen, second kitchens in the basement from pre-air conditioning days, when in the summer you wanted to cook in the basement, basically. So I'm glad we're addressing that.
Judy, you have a comment?
Yeah, so I agree with that. I'm just wondering where we have, but not limited to firewall separation or points of ingress or egress. So your meaning were, could you explain that better?
The, the, when you have an, an attached ADU, there needs to be a, a certain fire rating of a wall between the two units.
For the attached ADU, but, but a single family home that has a second kitchen might have another access. That's okay, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Oh, then I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, I, so. So yes, this is, unless you have other ideas about ADUs that I have not addressed, particularly with the consistency standards, those are usually something that, that comes up often as well. So you can email me directly and I'll type something up and present it for next month. But, but otherwise I, I'm hearing that this is about what you were looking, what you were trying to accomplish?
I, I think it hit most of the high points, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. The chair has nothing. Do any of the committee members have any reports?
Yeah, of course.
Hi, so I attended the UCCI ISECO Legislative Conference, as did Micah and Denise, actually. And I just wanted to give everyone an update. And you should be getting an email from our chief of staff. And I'm going to, I shared it with, with Brian Radner from Landy's so he can distribute to wherever he wants. So the UCCI and ISECO Board, which works through counties in all of Illinois, is aware of all the issues that all the counties have regarding solar and wind legislation that took away our citing authority to deny or support, well, I guess we can support because we can't deny. So we're aware of that. There's been a lot of legislation that's been submitted this year, more than in the past. So at least there are legislators that are hearing us and thinking we need to make some changes. And the thought is that we will get some changes in, at the end, even though all the bills didn't get out of committee, there will be some changes, hopefully going forward later in the session in an energy omnibus bill. So that's a positive. Don't know what it is going to be exactly, but I think anything that gives us some help with that would be great. Because like if you look at our board, we've denied the ones that are close to residential. So that would be a great starting point. And then we could hopefully get some more, because between where I live and where Sherri lives, there's a lot of agricultural land and I don't want to see it all solar panelled the whole way. So hopefully at some point we could, we could go ahead and get some changes with that. But, so stay tuned and I'll give updates to our chief of staff and Brian Radner so that we can all be aware of what's going on. And as far as Landy's staff goes, if you guys read this and say, from your perspective, because I don't do your job, this is one thing that really gives us trouble. Maybe we could see if we can get that added in somehow. That would be helpful as well, because if you guys don't tell me that, I don't know it. And then I can't pass it on. Same thing other Landy's departments may not tell the elected officials. So we don't know, you just kind of struggle through your day to day life with it. So if there's things like that, if you guys could go ahead and send it through whoever, Brian, Dawn, I don't know who, that would be helpful. And then I would make sure that I, because I sit on the wind and solar task force, I'd be, be sure to make sure I move that forward. So that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Director comments? Anybody else in staff or other reports? Okay, moving on to public comment. Are there any public comments? Please come on up. I just need you to give us your name when you get up there. Okay.
Thank you for having us today. Really appreciate you letting us speak. My name is Michael Richter. This is my wife, Kristen Richter. And we are here in, because we want to have land use, we want to put a request in for land use to modify the acceptable use rules for R1 properties. Just a little bit of background, this is probably going to feel a little juicy, just to let you know, so just to prep you. But we prepared this in response to the owners of two properties, 14560 and 14610 Forest Lane and 1705617036 West 147th Street. The neighbors collaborated and established a motocross track in May of 2024 that spans four yards in our Forest Hills subdivision of Lockport Township. Okay? That's why we're here. Really quick, and I really didn't know I could bring a thumb drive to present this, but I think it's really important to just illustrate that I live on, and this was really handy that you showed what a one acre lot was, because I live on a one acre lot and I have three lots between me and this motorcycle track. And this is sound from inside my home. And I'll give you a copy of this. You can watch it on unpublished video on YouTube. Don't want to, you know, put anything out there that would, you know, be sensitive on YouTube. But literally three acres away, I can hear this motorcycle noise inside of my home, because they've established a motorcycle track that spans four properties in my subdivision. So I'm going to stop that. I'm going to go back to my presentation. You can watch the video. I could play the video for you if you're interested.
I just want to remind you that we allow technically three minutes for public comment. I'll give you a little leeway.
So I practiced, so let me keep going here then. So imagine you move into a beautiful home and property and you enjoy peace and quiet for nine years, then a motorcycle dealer buys a home ordering your property. They build a giant pole building and then they build a motorcycle track in the back spanning four properties. You go to Land Use and I just want to say, Land Use has been very helpful. Land Use has been responsive, but I feel like the lack of clarification in the Land Use Code acceptable use table has presented a huge issue here. Land Use inspected the situation in the motocross track after I filed the complaint, which you'd think in a residential neighborhood, like you wouldn't have to have, you wouldn't be able to build a motocross track. That's ridiculous, okay? But if you own a motorcycle dealer, it's good for business. So you go to Land Use, file a complaint. Land Use tells you there's no violation because there's no rule that says you can. And there's no rule that says you cannot have a motocross track on an R1 lot. Okay, so they say go to the police, address it with the police for a noise complaint. So I contact the police, based on advice from Land Use, to complain about the noise code violation. The police tell me to call Land Use, because every time the police go to these property owners, they tell them Land Use came out here and told us that this was okay. And I say to the police, well, that doesn't mean that the noise ordinance isn't being violated. And what the police say is Land Use is also code enforcement. And they dictate what the noise enforcement is. So we can't write a ticket because Land Use said this is okay. And I know Land Use did not say it's okay, but this is what the property owners think. So lack of clarity in the code creates unnecessary frustration and county expense. We probably had a thousand or more dollars of Land Use time wasted. And we've called the police 12 times. And they, because these people keep telling us, or telling the police, Land Use gave us permission, they won't write a noise ticket. And so we put up with this all last summer. It started again when it got warm in March and we're not going to go through another summer with this. So we will call the police every time they ride on the track. What this doesn't solve, though, is when I go to sell my home, which I'm going to in the next couple of years, and people walk my property and they see a motorcycle track in the neighbor's yard, what are they going to think? Or if they come and look at my house and the, and the neighbors are riding and I call the police and they don't write a ticket, you think they're going to buy my house? And so it's creating diminished property values. The noise is driving me crazy. Like, it's just making me nuts. I can't handle it. And I want Land Use to contact the police and tell them they don't have permission for the track. And I want Land Use to consider clarifying code. So somebody can't build a motocross track in an R1 lot. It just seems ridiculous to me that that could happen. So what I'd request from Land Use is the following, and I'm wrapping up. I'm sorry, it's going a little long.
That's okay.
Please allow Land Use to work on modifying the existing code to provide clarification on what can and can't be done on an R1 lot and to protect neighbors from motocross tracks that have no business in the backyard. And we request that Land Use, please contact the sheriff's office to convey the message that they didn't give permission for this, so that tickets can start being written for noise, so we don't have to put up with this all summer in our yard. The track creates an automatic violation of the Will County noise ordinance. It creates liability from accidents on the property line, because it's an uninsurable piece of, you can't insure a track on a residential lot. Homeowner's insurance won't insure that. It decreases my property values and it's created unnecessary expense for the county. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I apologize, apologize for going over a bit. I do have copies of my presentation. Like to take a look at it, you're welcome to.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for listening. What would the next steps be?
Well, I would look to Land Use to perhaps investigate the noise issue.
Yeah, I need someone to contact the police and just tell them, like, we did not give permission to these residents for a motocross track to be present, because they use this every time to get out of a noise ticket. Okay, and, and so my intent is not to fight with, I don't want them to get a ticket. Like, I don't want that. I just want the noise to stop and I want the motocross track to go away, so it doesn't continue to decrease my property value and create an insurance liability.
I mean, I would think the noise ordinance issue is completely separate from Land Use, correct?
Exactly.
But how do we? Go ahead.
In the inspections, and I just might note, in the inspections, it said on public record that Land Use observed the track and no violations were observed. So the residents got a hold of this and they're like, we have permission from Land Use to have a track and we can make noise all we want, all day.
But those are two separate issues.
Yeah, the police have clarified, they can't make noise all day. But the existence of this track is a problem on an R1 property.
Go ahead, please.
I've already initiated the process to get, like, make sure the sheriff's department has clarification, that they're the responsible agency for enforcement of county codes regarding noise. So.
Right, my next step is to contact them. I'm going to contact whoever's in charge of the Will County Sheriff's Police. And because every time I ask for the, the head, they, they send a sheriff's officer. They won't let me talk to the sergeant, so.
Yeah, but I would suggest you keep pursuing that.
But from a Land Use perspective, the fact that this track exists on, adjacent to my property is creating an issue for, for my property values and for my liability.
Okay.
There's no setback. They're literally riding one foot from the property line. If they fly off the bike, they hit a tree on my property, it's going to go on my homeowner's insurance.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you for the information.
Yes, thank you very much.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry, my apologies.
With regard to the second issue, with regard modification of codes regarding the operation of OTVs, ATVs and tracks, that direction has to come from the committee. And that was what we had come before. So if the committee changes its mind, then we need the direction. So.
Yeah, in the February meeting, the committee indicated that they were going to kick this, to kick the can down the road on this issue. But in the meantime, my mental health is suffering because I listen to a motorcycle.
Understood, sir. I, I appreciate your comments, but I let you go on a little bit longer. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think I was, Judy just reminded me I wasn't here the day we had that discussion, but I, I personally think we ought to look at what is and isn't acceptable in terms of creating a track, especially in an R1 area. I don't know what would the next steps be on that. But yeah, we don't need to have that conversation right this minute. It's, but it's just something I think we should reserve for a future date, so. Okay, our next meeting is May, hold on one second, I lost my place now. Okay, our next meeting date is May 1st? Oh, I am so sorry. Please come up. Oh, I know, the tiny house lady.
Hi, everyone. Greetings. Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Will County Board and residents of the county. My name is Lauren Herrera and I'm here today for the third time to advocate for a vital and innovative housing solution, tiny homes as safe and permissible housing in Will County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today and I am grateful to everyone who has supported this cause, particularly the nearly 500 individuals who have signed our change.org petition, which I had the honor of presenting during previous meetings. For those who may not be familiar, tiny homes represent an affordable, sustainable and community focused housing option. These homes can help alleviate the growing need for affordable housing here in Will County. With escalating housing prices, the lack of affordable rental units and the burden of traditional housing costs, tiny homes offer a practical solution that can benefit everyone for those in need of housing, to those seeking eco-friendly alternatives. Many people in our community are struggling with the high cost of living. Tiny homes can provide an affordable alternative for seniors, young adults and individuals. This movement is not just about housing, it's about creating safe, stable environments for all residents of Will County. The nearly 500 people who have signed the petition agree with me and I believe our county has the potential to lead the way in embracing these modern housing solutions. I understand that there are concerns about zoning, infrastructure and aesthetics. However, many cities across the nation have successfully integrated tiny homes into their communities. With proper planning and collaboration, we can address these concerns and create a model that benefits both residents and the county. It's important to remember that tiny homes don't just serve as housing. They can revitalize communities, reduce environmental impact and offer an innovative approach to solving housing shortages. I urge the board and the community to consider the positive impact tiny homes can have on our county. I ask that you please consider revising zoning laws and supporting policies that will allow tiny homes to be a viable option for safe and legal housing. With your support, we can help ensure that everyone in Will County has access to secure and sustainable housing. Thank you for your time and attention. I look forward to working with all of you to make tiny homes a reality in Will County. And I ask for your continued support as we move forward with this important initiative. Let's build a community where everyone has a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 1st, 2025, and I will look. All right, all in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.